All right. The City of Marine City Commission meeting has called the order on Thursday, June 20th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bryson?
Here.
Mr. Hendrick?
Here.
Mr. Clausen?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rourke?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Here.
City Manager Atkins?
Here.
On to four for approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Under public comment, anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond. Will follow up as necessary. Please remember to direct your comments up here towards the board and myself as the mayor. Anybody? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Heather Bachram, and I'm here as Secretary to the Historical Society of Marine City. I just wanted to briefly say, I was very pleased to see that the Commission will tonight address the wording changes needed in the city bylaws of the Marine City Historic District Restoration Commission. This will be significant, will be significant in that it will help Marine City to be recognized by SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Organization, as a CLG community. As you can see on the map that you probably have, how few CLGs there are in the Thum area. I don't have the colored one, but maybe you do. It's also significant that areas receiving grants are frequently in the areas where there are CLGs. Recently, the Historical Society sent three people to attend the convention held by the Michigan Historic Preservation Network in Kalamazoo. SHPO is part of this network, and they will help any CLG member to find grants and to help with plans for the restoration and reuse, which is, in our case, is for our own significant historical building on Heritage Square. I'm hoping this change to the bylaws will be adopted so we can move forward in finding possible grants. SHPO also recommends partnering with nonprofits and other public organizations. I know that the Historical Society will be happy to partner with the city on this venture. We wish, as a group, to be of any help that we can, and, as you know, are already working towards raising funds for our Historic City Hall Maintenance Fund with the Community Foundation of St. Clair County. And thank you for allowing me to see.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Folks, Shag Marine City. First, I want to extend a huge thank you to T-Mobile for the $50,000 grant they gave us for the top lot. Second, I wanted to extend a huge thank you to the City of Marine City. The project turned out great. And also to the company that installed it as well. They did a wonderful job. I have my kids out there. They love it. There's lots of kids that are using it. It is wonderful. I'd like the city now to begin looking at another face as well, if possible. We've all heard about the vandalism of the beach bathrooms. I remember with the original top lot, people used to write in that slots, sign vandalize all the time. I'd like the city now to begin, so we don't have to keep spending money in repair after repair after repair, to begin maybe looking into some sort of security camera system, things like that, to actually begin catching individuals. I have a higher chance of catching those that are doing this. I know from working in the security industry, there's two companies that I worked with, and I thought highly of them. One was Pelco, and one was Vigilon. Those are two great companies. Maybe it's a starting platform. But they've done a beautiful job. We have a beautiful beachfront, you know, beautiful bathroom facilities there, the pavilion, top lots gorgeous. I just don't want to see it get vandalized in the future. And I think the city should take some preventative measures. I don't know if, well, I guess it is deterrent in a way, but also measure that if someone does do something, that we may have a higher chance of catching those responsible for it and prosecuting to the fullest extent of the law if need be. But once again, excellent job to the city for putting that in. Thank you once again to T-Mobile. It's beautiful. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Genevieve Prang, I'm a member of the Historic Commission. I just wanted to reiterate a bit of what Heather was saying. The CLG will be great for our community. I have information on, like, the grant cycles, the application due dates for the most recent one, but they haven't started on the next one yet, but that'll start in October of this year, it should, if the dates from last year carry over. And I have more information on the benefits of being a CLG, if anyone would like to look at it. That's about it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mike O'Fane. As always, I'm going to talk a little bit about transparency and accountability. Every single meeting, it seems like, at the end, one of you guys up there, or multiple guys, they're all patting each other on the back. Everybody's doing a fantastic job. Everything's going perfect. It's not necessarily the case. It really isn't. Beach bathrooms, we can't seem to stop vandalism there. We got the cemetery still not being weed whacked, and the city manager, given the reason that it's the weather, even though this has been happening well into last summer, so that doesn't really make sense. And, you know, he brings up wanting to contract out the services, which, Lisa, I know, is a huge, huge point for you. We've talked about this, and you didn't bring up one thing about that comment and how you wouldn't support contracting out DPW services. Why? Where's the questions? What happened to him?
I brought that up in the past, Mike.
At that, when he said it? Yeah, in the past, what I'm saying is, when he said it, you never brought it up. You never asked about it. It was never discussed. She talked to me. She talked to me. So I'm talking back. And there was no discussion about whether or not it should be contracted out, which is a statement by the city manager. The next meeting comes along, and then all of a sudden, it's, we need to hire a new person. These conversations should not be happening behind the scenes, in email, on text. These conversations need to happen at this table. So the public knows the ins and outs. The public knows the numbers that you were talking about, as far as if it makes sense to be contracted out versus what we're paying now. These are the things that you guys discuss at this table, not in emails. That's not transparent. Onto the next thing that's not transparent. This $15 a month charge that's going to go on everybody's water bills here soon. Can I get an answer sometime, maybe at the end of this meeting, when that's going to happen? When the average senior on fixed income can expect their water bills to go up 35%? I mean, my bill is 130 right now, so I'm assuming a single, seniors is around the same price, so quarterly, they're looking at 45 extra dollars on that bill. That's a 35% increase. That's huge. That's asking a senior to choose between water and medication. That's not right. You guys have to figure out a way to get rid of this $15 a month tax. It's what it is. It's tax. And we got no representation. You guys just added it. Essentially, it's a one mil tax. It's a one mil tax on a $180,000 house, because it's $180 a year that you guys just pushed on to the citizen with, here you guys, go, $15 a month. That was the only thing that was said. No discussion. We need to have some kind of low-income exemption for that fee to ask anybody to raise their water bill, when we are the highest in the county. 35% is too much. That's too much. We got a lot in our fund balance. Every time Curtis McBride comes through here and audits our fund balance, he's always saying, how much extra money we have? We have more than the state even recommends. Let's use some of that extra money. Put it in a low-risk investment, stock portfolio, get a return on it. Start looking outside the box to help your citizens instead of being lazy and just saying, oh, yep, everybody can handle $15 a month. That's not a big deal. It's only $15 a month. For some, it is. And I know, a few of you know that that's true. The other thing I was a little upset about was, you guys didn't want to work with that developer, the housing developer, Mr. Duval, as far as his tapping fees. I mean, do you really think, and it was funny, Bill, you actually said, if you need your water tapped, you gotta pay for it. And it's hilarious, because in Cochaville, you wrote, you signed off on your daughter's water tap, and she didn't pay for it. So it's kind of funny that you said that. How nobody knows that? I'm not sure. Anyways, that's obviously was very illegal and should be looked into, but, you know, good old boys club around here. We need to start helping out these, these low, small businesses, such as developers. You guys should have worked with them. You think you made up the whole story? No. You could have, like, 12,000? The whole limit was 24,000 he's asking for? Help him out with 12,000. Another thing, there's a business owner in town, wanted to open up a taco bout, really was serious, looking into it. After he looked at the taxes, didn't make sense. Didn't make sense. We got to start thinking about these things. Algenack is literally dying in front of our eyes, and I have a feeling it's going to move on down this way while St. Clair is thriving with corporate Hamlin pubs coming through, Lebanese places, like, they are thriving. We need more businesses here, and we need to not say no to any of them. And maybe help out a little bit with those tax incentives for small businesses, for people that things, people need and want.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi. My name is Sheri Gray, and I'm just here with the Historical Society, asking you to please do the CLG quickly, if you can, because somebody's going to beat us to it in this area. And just to be able to try to get the grants to help would be a wonderful thing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, we'll move on to six, approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of June 6, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of June 6, 2024.
Support.
Are so moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda, item seven, we have the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, Departmental Monthly Activity Reports, Community and Economic Development Meeting Minutes of April 24, 2024, Election Commission Meeting Minutes of January 18, 2024, the Special Event Permit for the Marine City Maritime Days. I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items A through E, as presented.
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, letters A through E, as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Under nine, financial business. We have expenditures under A, including payroll of $290,670.65. I have a motion to approve those expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $290,670.65.
Make a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $290,670.65.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to B, preliminary financial statements for May 2024. Have a motion, receive and file those preliminary financial statements for May of 2024.
Make a motion that we receive and file the preliminary financial statements of May 2024. Support.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Katie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under nine, C, it's Resolution 18-2024, and that's for the budget amendments. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution 18-2024? And that's the resolution to amend the fiscal year 2324 budget to adjust for changes in anticipated revenues and expenditures.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 018-2024 amendments to the 2324 budget.
Support.
Any discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to D, Resolution 19-2024, for the fund transfer from general fund to the cemetery fund. I have a motion to approve that resolution, to approve the fund transfer between general fund to the cemetery fund in the amount of $22,635.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 019-2024, the fund transfer from the general fund to the cemetery fund.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yep.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to item E, the Utility Billing Payment Arrangement Policy and Procedure. And for that, I'd like the city manager?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask the Commission to consider tabling this item to our next regular meeting. I have some questions that I have had brief conversation with Mr. Davis on in regards to some language and potential conflicts that we already have in place with ordinances for rolling onto taxes. I think if we could have a little additional review of the questions that I posed to Mr. Davis, we may have some modifications coming to this document. So I'd like to ask for your consideration to table this item at this time.
Any specific date?
Next meeting. I think we can have it back for the next meeting.
Okay.
There's going to be just, I think, one meeting in July, is that correct?
Depending on the action of the Commission, it could be.
Okay. I just want to make sure we give it time when we get there.
Yeah, they're, they're very minor, but I would, I'd feel better having, have some input on, prior to the signature line, I think we need to clearly spell out what the implications are for non-compliance within agreement and in regards to the tax placement that we have by ordinance.
I'll make a motion, we table the Utility Billing Payment Arrangement Policy and Procedure until our next meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Onto next item, the Utility Billing Leak Adjustment Policy.
And also ask for a tabling on this. In case there are changes that are necessary to item nine E, it may require changes in nine F. And would be the same intention was to bring it back at the next meeting.
I'll make a motion, we table the Utility Billing Leak Adjustment Policy until our next scheduled meeting.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Onto item G, the Long and Short Term Disability Insurance. I have a motion to approve the proposal for the Long and Short Term Disability Insurance from the standard to a total monthly premium of $766.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? City Manager, was there anything you wanted to?
Yeah, I just want to make a little clarification for the Commission and for the residents as well. Right now, we currently don't have such policy in place. However, we, we could potentially find ourselves in a position, if we had an employee that went off on a disability leave, we could be paying that individual their salary for 52 weeks and then still be required, especially in the case of potentially the police department, to have to hire another full-time employee. You're basically paying two salaries. By employing an insurance policy, we then would be in a position to be able to have those costs covered, something that, that likely should have been done in the past, but we maybe didn't have the numbers as far as staffing of where we are today. So it's money well spent. You know, $7,000 a year is your max on your policy versus what could be over $100,000 if you're paying two police officer positions or so. Very common, also, I may add, in, in most municipalities to have.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 10, for unfinished business. First is the A, the Amendment to the Historic District Ordinance, and it's the tabled first reading that's come back. I have a motion to approve the ordinance 2024-004. That's the ordinance of the City of Marine City, St. Clair County, Michigan, to amend number 155.098 relating Historic District Study Committee and the Study Committee Report for First Reading.
So this has not been voted on for first reading yet, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion, we approve the amendments to ordinance number 2024-004 for first reading. Support?
Okay, and for now, discussion?
Madam Mayor? I provided a, a review of this dated June 18th, and you had asked me to look at the issue being raised with the deletion of the language, and I conclude that granting the requested language deletion will bring the language into compliance with the, with the actual act and allow the city to become an applicant for a CLG. Doesn't guarantee that we'll get a CLG, but it gives you an opportunity to do it. I believe that when you look at the programs, it opens doors to benefits, allowing the city to be on the CHAPO local historic list. And then you asked me to look at the balance of the safeguards in the process of establishing a historic district, and I didn't see any negative legal consequences to other property owners by deleting that language, and I didn't see any legal conflicts with other ordinance provisions. I think we have to be reminded that the, in order for a resource or a property in the city to become a historic district, it's kind of a strange word for, it could be just a historic district, doesn't mean a, a big district, it could just be one building, as it is, that there's a process that involves the Commission getting a study committee in place, right? And then the study committee has a lot of things it has to go through, and it's, it's in that vein that the law doesn't, the, the folks don't want to see, you know, seeking permission, actually, from, from property owners during that study process. But as Commissioners, you are worried about your role, and once the study committee is done with what they do, they bring it back to the City Commission in the form of a proposed ordinance, and the ordinance would create the historic district. You're free to vote yes or no on the ordinance. You can end it with a no vote, and there would be no such historic district. Or you can grant the ordinance, and that historic district would be created. It's only then, when something is now a historic district, that, in your example, you, you haven't given up ownership of the property, you haven't given up ownership of the resource, but you do give up the review of exterior changes and some interior changes. So if you wanted to propose something to be done to the building, you would have to get a certificate of approval from the Commission before that could be done, because the whole nature is to preserve the character and the look of the exterior part of the, of the structure. So I know there was some concern about, well, you know, this is going to affect future property owners. I don't think it does, because each historic district has to go through the process, and each historic district has to come back to you in the form of a proposed ordinance, and each has to be voted on up or down. You don't have to approve a historic district, but you could. And it's only then that the control over exterior modification, you lose that as a, as a, as a local governmental body in favor of the historic folks who tend to know better what keeps the resource looking in its proper format. So I would be, I do, I did read, and I've made some inquiries about the benefits of, of being part of the CLG. I've also given you citation to Attorney General Opinion 6919, which talks about this issue, and the Attorney General has made it clear that any flirting with the type of language that we now want to delete, any flirting of having that in would, in fact, destroy your opportunity to, to make the inquiry and the implication to get that designation. So if you have any questions about what I provided, be happy to answer them. It's a document, I believe, that, you know, I, I always present my stuff to you, privileged and confidential, but if you were to vote to allow folks to read this, I, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
One question that I had, when we voted to make it a historic district, and it is, when?
And it is. Right.
And removing that language in the ordinance, does that change anything that we, any control that we currently have versus once removed that? So everything is still the same. It doesn't change the city's control right now at the building, for the external authority?
Well, you're the owner of the building, so let's say you guys wanted to paint the building, okay? You would have to propose painting the building, but you couldn't just paint the building. You would have to get approval from the Historic Commission to review that and, and, and kind of like rule on whether or not you could do that painting or some painting. If you wanted to change the window structure or any other facial exterior look to the building, you're still the property owner, but you're relinquishing, any, any property owner of a, of a historic district resource loses the control over making its own selection for exterior repairs and alterations.
And we've already done that once.
And you've already done that. This, this historic district is just what it is. It's not being expanded by this language. It's not being detracted. It is what it is. That ship sailed. You already dissolved, from what I understand, the study committee. It's, it, it made its way to you. You passed it as an ordinance. It's a historic district. It's your only one, as I, as I understand it. So any new one, any new property owner that might, you know, be subject to a request to be part of a, of a historic district, you know, as a result of the study committee, it would still come back to you. You would still be able to say no to that.
But don't they also, if you create a new historic district, that there's like a 60-day window?
Yes.
For the public who doesn't want to be in that historic district, that they can?
Chime in.
Come here and they can?
Everybody, there's, there, the study committee has multiple pub, public hearing, public hearing requirements. I, you know, I, I gave you a, a three-quarter dive on all the things that the study committee has to do, but then I attached to the, the, the complete list of all the things they have to go through. It's quite an exhaustive process to get something to be a historic district. It's not an overnighter by any means, and it does come back to you for an affirmative vote in the form of an ordinance. So you would have a first reading, a second reading on the ordinance itself, and you can vote up or down on that ordinance.
To phrase it another way, the City Commission cannot just force any residential district into the Historic Commission or Historic District and take control or anything like that.
Negative. That cannot happen.
And I think that's the biggest fear people have had with this.
Yeah, I hope, I hope my explanation alleviated that.
It does. But here's, here's, and, and I, I saw your opinion. I even went back. I found all my old stuff. I even found that old Attorney General Opinion, so I already knew on all that. But here's the thing. I understand we have to be in compliance with the historic act, okay? We have to remove that, and understand we have a process for the new ones. The problem I have is the existing. I mean, at some point, we need discussion on the existing, because so much has happened here, and it hasn't been done correctly. The building exterior was done. It wasn't done historically. You have windows in the upstairs that don't open. All of our original windows were taken by the company that did it. We lost all our historic windows. When we put in things on the grounds, nothing as far as the historic district, from what I can tell. I've asked numerous times, has everyone been followed? So I'm concerned that it's like been a, sometimes we follow it and sometimes we don't follow it. And I've got the original old book. This was the study on that building from April 4th of 2000. This is where your two and a half million cost is coming from. It's right in here. This whole book needs to be updated to the 24, the last 24 years. This needs to be updated to what the current issues are. This has everything that's wrong with the building, everything that's been a mess. But again, my concern is that we do this, yet we're not following all the rules. Now, I get that, like the city, the city's owner of the building, we reserve the right to decide interior, exterior, and then it has to go to that board to do it. It also states that that board has to have people on there that have historic knowledge.
Yeah, there's.
And I'm not saying that we don't have some people, but there's to what degree. So I mean, there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of issues that we need to resolve because of this ordinance, and I don't know how we take that on to do that, but like I said, things haven't been done properly. So how do we get to the point of it being done properly to make sure that in the future we're putting in windows that, you know, in 18, what was this, 18 whatever, windows would have opened? I don't understand why, when the windows were put in, they were fixed closed windows. That's not historic to the building. So, and then the inside got, I was in there recently. The inside has been gutted in some places. None of that was approved by this commission. Everything has to be approved by this commission that goes on with that building. So we have to get back to some type of process with this so that this is done right. I mean.
All you have to do is follow the law.
But it's not being done right. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand. I mean, once it was designated a historic district.
Yeah.
The rules about how you go about altering the exterior and some portions of the interior are very defined.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a, there's a process for it. There's a certification for it. There's a review process. There's a criteria on who has to be on the review, and I think what, you know, if you look at the system from higher above, what the system is looking at is that if you're taking time to designate something in your community as a historic district, please have a system in place, follow the law with respect to altering it, so it doesn't lose its characteristics.
Correct.
That's the goal.
Yes.
That is the goal.
So if I understand the process correctly, the decision-making power, the approval process for changes and actions with the property would be with the historic commission, correct?
As proposed.
So if we do this, what is the relationship for the public's benefit and possibly to answer some of these concerns here between this body and the historic commission and making sure the historic commission is operating within the legal boundaries of what they're charged to do? Do we pass a resolution? We need you to do X, Y, and Z?
No, you just need to adhere to the historic district rules and regulations as is.
So technically.
So you're the property owner. You're the city. You're the, you happen to own this. This isn't, this isn't, who can I pick on? This isn't Phil's property. This is your property. So if it was Phil's property, and Phil wanted to paint his building, and, but it's already been placed in the historic district. Phil, you don't get to pick the paint. You don't get to just paint your building. You have to go to this committee who knows better than you and get it approved, that it's going to be consistent with the historical nature of the building.
Yes.
Here, we're that person.
Yes.
And so anything that you really want to get done there, you're going to be proposing.
You're the historical committee, commission is that person.
The owner?
No.
No, we're the, okay, we're the owner, but the person we get approval from is the historical.
Correct. But what I'm seeing is this board has to start taking ownership to make the decisions on what you want to do with that building. It shouldn't be up to them to tell us. It's up to us to tell them what we want to do, then they have to decide if we can do it or not based on the rules. And that's where this whole thing has been failing, is that it's not going through that proper process, and it hasn't for years.
So we need a little bit more 300 Broadway discussions on our agendas to address what we're doing with this building.
Yeah, I think, I think the purpose of tonight was, you wanted to know what are the ramifications of deleting that language, and I'm telling you, deleting the language actually makes the language consistent with the law. As it's, if it has that language in there that's in there, it's inconsistent with the law. So the language should come out, and the other point was to tell you, I don't think it changes anything on these relationships.
Correct. Yes, I agree with that whole heartly. We just got to come up with.
So we need another session.
So we've got like a, almost like a two.
We need another session now to talk about our historic district.
Correct.
Sure.
And how it structurally is going to get managed.
Yes.
If that's the outcome you wanted, that's fine, but yeah, this decision is merely to strike the language in order to even allow us to apply to be a CLG.
Right.
And then we'll come up with another plan.
But again, yes, we definitely have to go out with it, because if you really want to do a plan, you're going to have to have better, like I said, this is the two and a half million everybody's been talking about from 2000. You know darn well that's probably five, five million by now. And this was very, it's very, it's a very interesting book. Have you read this one?
I don't have that, no.
This one's very interesting. This has all the plans. This has all the issues with the building, costs, everything. And this was done by that company, the Smith Group, back in the day.
Do we have an electronic copy of this by chance?
Probably not. I don't know.
The book itself looks like it could be a.
No, they made it look like it.
We don't have an electronic copy, but we can probably get it scanned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was it made to look like that or did it wear over the years?
It was made to look like that.
So in comment to this, with the repairs and list of things we do need done with this building, making this change to this ordinance is going to open us up to these grants from Chapo and other opportunities that they provide, including experts that can come in and do consultations and studies and things like this that'll help us take better action on this and upkeep as a body in the future.
And that's good, but the problem is, you have to be prepared.
Oh, yeah.
On what's going to be done based on that book. I mean, and again, I just don't want to see things go on the way they have. I mean, the exterior now is starting to come apart again. The interior, that's just a mess. And so how big are the average grants? Do you have any idea what these are for?
My understanding is they start from, like on the small end, low thousands, like $5,000, but they're often around $50,000 and get up to $100,000.
Okay.
And so these are done yearly. The same recipients can get them year after year, and so this could help us tackle one project at a time.
Okay.
Right? With this money alone, right?
Yeah.
And part of this is, well, we have certain resources available in the city coffers. It can't just all go to 300 Broadway, and this would help alleviate and get us moving on that. We seem to have an active participation from the historical commission and historical societies and other partner organizations that want to take action and help prompt that conversation. That helps bring it to our attention and get us moving.
The conversation has been here for over 20 years. So, I mean, I applaud everybody that's hung in there, that continues to try to fight for this, but it's been a long, hard road, you know? And maybe someday, but I'll tell you, it's been interesting. But this, this is what's going to have to be addressed so that you know what to get when you go for those grants, is kind of what I'm pointing out.
So hitting your CLG designations will be tough. It's, it's not easily granted. You have no chance of getting it if you don't delete this language.
Exactly.
So what's the process? How long does it take? Any idea roughly?
No, I mean, there's a process. It just isn't, it isn't handed out easily.
Okay.
We were just informed that, you know, applications can start in October, right? So.
For the grants.
For the grants, okay.
Three months.
I'm told about three months.
I think the maximum.
But this is just to get the designation?
Yeah.
Right.
And then you still have to put in for a grant after that?
So if it takes three months from the designation, so we're looking at September, October, if you get the designation, and then October the grant's open, then they're going to start applying for them.
Okay.
But even just being this takes us down from a pool of, you know, thousands of applicants to 42?
42 currently. Algenep is currently trying to get a facility designation as well. And.
We would like to be 43.
So would I.
Or two, yeah.
I don't have a problem with the language.
Can we write to help write a new plan?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with removing this language. I just am concerned of what goes next, and we need to address that. That's all.
Again, some of the things in that book have been done. The windows thing, I've had discussions with people about that too, and it was that there were two choices. You could rebuild them exactly the way they were or do a modern looks-like substitute, and then that was okay by Chapo. But anyway, I mean, there's a lot of conjecture around it, but again, the focus here is get the language suitable.
Correct.
For CLG application.
I just want to make sure that we don't drop this, once this, we pass this and we do it, that the rest of this doesn't fall by the wayside, because there's a lot of work that really needs to be done again to get this stuff all back into shape.
Fully agreed.
Okay.
Engineering firm being engaged, other things, yeah, this is all part of the process.
Well, we haven't approved anything for an engineering firm. That's what I'm saying. You can't move forward until this board knows what are you, what are we doing with an engineering firm and what are we?
Agreed. Remember the list that Jake gave to the 300 Broadway committee? A lot of that relies on an engineering firm making assessments on items that were requested of that.
Is that something we're doing?
It hasn't, it hasn't come to any recommendation to come forward.
That's what I'm getting at.
We've got to have a process.
Right, but I think, I think what Commissioner Ross is saying is, we needed an engineering firm to be working with Marine City so that we could start doing some of those. Now, now that we're getting ducks in the road to start addressing these issues that you're bringing up, so that we're in line to actually do these things.
Correct. So I just want to make sure everybody understands, we haven't approved going to the engineering firm yet until we figure out what we're going to do, and I just want the process to go the way it should go, is all I'm looking at.
Don't disagree there.
Right. Any other discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Carey.
Onto 10B, Resolution 13-2024, the amendment to Section 3.3 of the Charter. I have a motion to approve that resolution, 13-2024, resolution regarding amendment to Section 3.3 of the Charter of the City of Marine City.
Make a motion we approve Resolution Number 013-2024, the amendment to Section 3.3 of the City Charter.
Support.
Any discussion?
Is this, this is the.
Compensation.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that you consider amending the resolution to have caps, so that it's not open under, we had talked in the committee about 3K and 5K as being the ultimate cap under the charter for the fees of commissioners and or mayors. Left the way it is, we want to reduce the compensation to an ordinance, which makes sense, so that we don't have to visit the charter every time you want to amend the compensation. But I think, I think, I think you have to have a cap.
But that's not what you're going to start, people.
No, no, no. It's not to exceed, never to exceed these numbers, so you would only have to visit the charter sometime in the way future if you were ever getting close to those caps.
Can't we do it as a percentage of some other thing or?
Hold it to an index? I've tried, I've tried to figure, I just think that left, left for the people to say, okay, each commission can adopt an ordinance about setting salaries. You know, you might get a commission that says, all right, Brian Ross says we're all getting 100 grand.
Sure.
Per meeting.
I just feel, so fine, but you put that language in the ordinance and it starts looking, I mean, rather in the charter, and it starts looking like that's what we want to pay ourselves. I guess I fear, that's what I fear.
Well.
I don't like that idea.
No, okay, so I'm just, I'm just saying, we got to have some.
It requires a cap?
No, I'm not saying it requires it. I'm saying, I'm urging you to think about having some, so it can't go wild.
Correct. Because currently, just so everybody knows, currently, a commissioner gets 800 and the mayor gets 1,200. That hasn't changed. Yeah, a year, and that hasn't changed for, yeah, yeah.
Brian, what you could, you could say is, in no case shall be greater than 10% higher than the current, than the current payment.
Yeah, but I don't want it to get out of control like other communities.
Sure.
Do exactly what you're talking about.
That, a thing like that I'd agree with. I just fear putting numbers on there would just make, turn people right off.
You go right, you go right to the.
Again, the ordinance I like because it puts it before people, there's multiple readings, you know, we.
But you have to give them some type of limit, or they're not going to vote for it thinking that it's going to be a free-for-all.
How about if we just?
Well, we agree there. I like the 10%.
But in no case shall be increased by more than 10% in any ordinance. I can just, we could just.
Is there a time limit? I mean, we can do it every meeting.
You guys haven't visited this in.
Yeah. Maybe we should say it can only be done annually or by, you know, what I'm saying? Otherwise, you could say, oh, 10%. Well, next meeting, let's jump it up 10%, and the one after that, 10%.
How about 10% in any two-year period?
Yeah, yeah.
For term or?
Well, two years.
Well, hers is two, ours is four.
Well, well, well.
So we could have to do it twice.
How about four?
Four, yeah.
That's a good idea, at least as a term.
10% in a four-year term.
You got to do something, because, yeah, you know.
All right, no more than, no more than 10% in any four-year period.
That's it.
Anyways, that was just, you don't, I mean, you don't have to do this.
No, I like that.
Like the idea of that, yeah.
So that's not a huge increase.
So next year, 880?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the only other thing, too, like.
That number should reflect inflation.
You think we should tie it to an index?
Tie it to CPI.
I mean, the money was established, it shouldn't reflect inflation, gave you that much at that time, it should do that much today.
I might not know.
I'm trying to, but I have an idea. If you're amending this anyways, the 10% over four years is a great idea, but add to it upon review of surrounding communities. So like every so often, whatever that may be, you look at all the communities around and see what they're making.
They're already making way more.
No, I know, if this goes through, it's passed.
Township, the township committee.
Going forward, you're always going to remain in sync, because if the charter requires that you constantly have to look, you see where they're at, and you're keeping your people in sync as you go forward.
Let me, let me, let me preface the conversation on all these resolutions for the, for the audience. Passing the resolution is one step towards getting these on the ballot. We still, we are still going to have town.
Meetings.
Meetings and other meetings to discuss this language. We just have to get something over the bridge to the Attorney General as to what we're thinking of doing. So this is probably, what I'm getting at, Phil, this is probably not the last time we're going to talk about this, but I understand your point.
All the, all these have to be approved by the voters. This is just discussion, but in a township, some of these townships, they're paying anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 for a trustee? for a trustee?
How about after initiated by ordinance? So, we get one?
You get one.
Then, not to exceed ten percent.
In any four-year.
In any four-year term.
Okay, you can approve it subject to that, and I'll make the change and send you a fresh resolution.
Okay.
So, I will modify my motion to approve the resolution subject to the changes that we discussed.
Support?
Hey, no other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry.
Okay, Resolution fourteen dash twenty-two-four, the amendment to section three point one-one of the Charter. Motion to approve that resolution fourteen, twenty-two-four, regarding amendment of section three point one-one to the Charter of the City of Marine City.
Make a motion, we approve resolution number zero-one-four dash two-zero-two-four, amendment to section three point one-one of the City Charter. Support.
Any discussion?
Well, let's tell them what this one, this is the relationship of the commission to the administrative service. So, the city manager shall be responsible to the commission for the complete and efficient administration of all city departments of the city government under the jurisdiction of the city manager. The city commission, its elected members, and its committees, as established from time to time, shall not interfere with, obstruct, or prevent the city manager from exercising. City manager discretion and administration of city services, the commission, its elected members, commissions, boards, and, I'm getting, and commissioners shall deal with the city administrative service solely and exclusively through the city manager, and shall not direct, issue orders, instruct, evaluate, or in any way obstruct or the subordinates of the city manager. Any and all questions or concerns about city administrative services shall be presented through the city manager only. That's what this one does.
Now, the, the significant change, if I'm reading this correctly, is that this removes the line except for the purpose of inquiry, correct?
Well, it doesn't, it tried to, it tried to explain what that meant, but the, the committee, and there was a committee who looked at this, that spent a lot of time on this one, trying to ferret out how to better word that.
It.
That language, I give Mike Hilfrin credit, he brought that language to our attention, and it, it needed some clarification, and I think that's what the committee tried to do.
And, and truly, it, kind of the thought process was, at the end of the day, the city manager is responsible for everything that happens with, you know, city employees. So, if there's an inquiry, it should go through the city manager.
Right.
Or if there's a problem, you know, obviously, direction. But it all should flow through the city manager, because they're the ones that are ultimately responsible for it.
And I think part of the position, part, part of the, part of the position was this, Mike, was, we didn't want to place the, the, the decision on the employee, on the subordinate. So, Sean, you're talking to a subordinate, you think you're making an inquiry, they think you're criticizing them. We didn't want to put that burden, that tension. So, why not just take the inquiry to the city manager and let him deal with it?
Right. I was asking for clarification for the public. So, this would prevent, say me, if I may use your example, Chief, I, I can't text.
We always, we always do, you're free to, on all issues, on all issues.
I can't text her or call them up and say, like, why did you all do this over here? That could be seen as.
Well, you might view that as an inquiry, but they might view it as.
Right, which is why now, if I had a question about the chief's action, I should be directing it through, that, that would be what this is getting at.
Same question, it just goes a different way.
And then I'll take it to the department head in this case, and generally, have him follow-up direct with you. But that way, we have that clarification, so there's no pointing of fingers that you violated the Charter.
And it also keeps you in the loop, so you know what's going on.
Right.
Versus one of your employees, you know.
I appreciate it.
The average citizen has more power than this board, in that case. They can go to the department head, but this board can't. Doesn't make that sense to them. You guys are, you know, I feel about that one. The original founders were for that way for a reason.
My mic. Thanks again.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry.
Okay. Onto D, Resolution fifteen dash twenty-two-four, the amendment to section three point two-zero of the Charter. I have a motion to approve that resolution fifteen dash twenty-two-four, resolution regarding amendment, section three point two-zero of the Charter of the City of Marine City. And if someone wants to read that one?
Well, let me, let me shed some light on this one. This one was intended to make sure that at all times, the city had policies in effect by direction of the Charter on categories of information. That having been said, Lisa, since this was a very important one to you, could you read the categories to the public, if you would? Of all, these are all the policies that will always be in effect.
Correct. The city commission meeting procedures and policies, and Open Meetings Act compliance policy, a Freedom of Information Act compliance policy, a records retention compliance policy, an ethics code of conduct policy, a personnel procedure policy, and a general manager review policy. All of those. And there's a lot in all those, yes.
What about the policy? You can use the police chief as an example during all meetings. Past practice. No, the, the whole point was to, to make sure, and I think if you lead, read the language clearly, these policies have to be in place and maintained. Brian Ross spent a lot of time on the word "maintained" at all times. So, there can never be a time period when one of these policies is not in place.
Did we not discuss, though, like, Jim's policies are a little different, but they still have to be there? Should, oh.
No, we, we decided that'd be handled differently.
Because it's a different style of policy.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, alright, got it.
Do they have to be reviewed every so often?
Yeah.
As often as you want, if.
Right, that was the maintained part.
That, that's the maintained part. If Mr. Clausen at some point believes that there is a part of one of the policies that were, and he wants to put it on the agenda for review, then, then instead of having to change the Charter, we would only have to change the policy. But we would always maintain a policy in that regard.
Most of these, the biggest one that might change more often is a personnel policy.
Yeah, that's very dynamic.
Most of the rest of them are fairly consistent, unless there's a ruling from the state or something that changes.
And, and, and you folks have been clamoring to get these policies in effect, and so this forces you to do it.
And another point is that misconduct of these policies will be considered a violation of the Charter.
Correct.
That's another thing to note, that though we're removing some fairly antiquated policies from the Charter and replacing it with these, it still is considered a violation of the Charter to violate them. So, it's out of the Charter, but yet in it at the same time.
Okay. Now, if this passes by the public's vote when we get to that point, and we don't have one of these policies in play, I assume the next meeting, we have to sit down and hammer out that policy.
Yep, we have to get them, we have to get the, we have to start on them generally soon.
Preferably before the vote happens, so that they're ready.
So, they're ready to go. And that was the other point of the committee, was let's push ourselves, because we've kicked the policy can down the road, you know, not intentionally, but we've, you know, we've, we've been talking about doing these policies for quite some time.
And part of the problem is, the Charter and some of these policies are all in conflict.
Right. And now we want, we want to harmonize, we want to harmonize the policies with the Charter.
But we were also careful about the implementation, because we said, shall cause to be developed, implemented, and maintained.
So, it gives you a little time.
Right.
Gives you some break, but I think.
But it doesn't give you, you know, as soon as this is.
No, it, it's not an immediate deadline, but it also doesn't give you, like.
Carte blanche to.
To never do it.
Right.
Most of these, we have something sort of already.
Correct, yeah.
So, it'd be an update of them.
We update them, and then they become official to the Charter, right?
I think this is helpful for the public to fully understand what to expect out of their commissioners.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number zero-one-five dash two-zero-two-four, amendment to section three point two-zero of the City Charter. Support?
Okay. No further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry.
Okay, on to E, Resolution sixteen dash twenty-two-four, amendment to section five point four of the Charter. The motion to approve the resolution sixteen, twenty-two-four, regarding the amendment of section three point, no, it's section five point four of the Charter of the City of Marine City. And if someone would like to read that.
Well, prior to that, this, this is the removal from office provision. I can tell you that the committee looked at this very closely, considered everything from deleting it to expanding it. Instead, what the committee came up with for your review and, and potential approval is having the process, but putting more safeguards and more due process into the system in favor of the accused person. Giving more rights in the hearing process, more time in the hearing process, the ability to receive and review all evidence before the hearing. In a sense, just a better process with more rights and due process for the person at issue. And I think the committee came out with, with a sequence of, of handling it. And with that, I think somebody could read it slowly to the public, because it's, it's, it's something that I think the public should hear about. How about that, Jacob, or, how about Sean?
I can read it for the public, if someone else really wants to. Proposed amendment to section five-four, removal from office. A removal by the commission of an elected official or members of city boards or commissions shall only be made for a reason then set forth by state statute for removals by the governor, or for misconduct in office by actions in violation of the Charter. Any commissioner may initiate the removal process by placing the proposed removal on a commission agenda and receiving a majority vote of the commission to proceed. In order to proceed, the commission shall adopt a resolution supporting the proposed removal with identity, which identifies each basis to support the removal with all applicable evidence attached to the resolution. If the resolution supporting removal is adopted by the commission by majority vote, the commission shall cause the resolution to be hand-delivered to the person subject to the removal process. Any hearing on the proposed removal shall be conducted by the commission after a minimum of ten calendar days after written notice is hand-delivered to the person subject to the removal process. A ten-day calendar extension shall be granted upon the written request by the person subject to removal process. At the hearing, the commissioner that initiated the removal process shall set forth the factual basis to support each removal reason presented in the resolution supporting the removal. The person subject to the removal hearing shall have the right to be present, the right to be represented, the right to present arguments, the right to present documents, the right to call witnesses, and the right to respond to each removal reason as presented. A majority vote of the commission, exclusive of any member whose removal is the subject of the hearing, shall be required for any removal. An approved removal shall take effect immediately. There we go.
I have a question. So, what if you can't hand-deliver it to the person? What if they go to Canada for a month, and you can't deliver it to them? Is there some process in there? You know, they could be avoiding having it delivered, like people avoid summonses and, you know, all the other things. Is there some kind of process that after, you know, six months of trying to deliver it every day, that it goes to something else?
Yeah, we, we talked about that, it's a good point, and, you know, we figured that anyone we're trying to remove from office is here, or is part of an office, so we would hope they're, anyone who goes to Canada, they should be removed anyways. But what, what we were, what we were trying to do is, is not make it something that goes by email, or, you know, I mean, what we could do is approve this subject to by hand-delivery or certified return receipt mail at, at their last known address, if that.
And then what, if they, you don't get a.
Well, I mean, I don't know, you can, you know, you.
Yeah, what do they do with, you know, when they serve?
Well, in the court system, we would, we would put a bench warrant out for them, right, right, chief? But we're not gonna do that. I, I just think, you know, it's gonna be somebody who's involved in the city office structure in some way, because we're removing them from either this commission or some board. But, you know.
People can be squirrely.
That said, if a commissioner we're trying to remove gets squirrely and flees town to Canada to hang out with Mounties and maple syrup, we don't have to worry about them in some ways, because they're absent. And if they return to serve on the commission, we can serve them then, right?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, I just wondered.
Their seat theoretically occupied until they return, but if they show up, we can then serve them.
Yeah, because if they miss so many meetings, right?
See, the, the reason we, we talked about, the, the hand-delivery process gets rid of all the arguments. Well, I didn't get that.
Right.
I didn't see that email. I didn't, I didn't.
I like the hand-delivery.
I didn't sign for that certified.
Right.
Letter. So.
Okay.
Is that right?
I just want to make sure there's something going on there, that we're not stuck forever.
I agree.
Okay.
So, I guess the only thing that I still don't like about this particular ordinance is that you could prove your case, that you, the person that's been accused, could have proved their case, and proved that they didn't do anything wrong, and still be voted out. That's the only bad thing about this ordinance.
Well, you would, the, the subjective determination of whether your case has been proved, right?
Yeah.
Would be in the eyes of the accused. The balance of the commissioners would have to agree, right, or disagree. At some point, I mean, you, you know, the accused person may believe they proved every other, every element, but the board determines that they haven't proved anything. So.
But there still could be instances.
But is, is that not the case with, like, a criminal trial that goes to a jury, and you're tried by your peers, the commissioners or the peers making the decision?
This was never handled by a proper trial.
No, it's not.
Having been through it.
Absolutely.
Having been through it.
And, and we get closer to more of a proper trial, reduced process, but I mean, the judgment is carried out by peers, right, the fellow commissioners?
Correct.
And, and that's, that's how, one of the basis of our legal system, is that your peers should be the ones making the decision.
True, but in some.
Maybe not.
In some instances, it has to be more than the majority. I mean, you've seen it at the Sunday hearings and stuff, it's gotta be sixty percent, or whatever.
Supermajority, something of this nature.
Yeah, so maybe in that case, it should be more than just, you know.
Should be a supermajority.
Right.
So, would you, would you want it to be a two-thirds majority of the sitting commissioners?
That would make it more fair, I think.
Exclusive of the person.
I don't know if that would even, I, I mean, it all comes down to, if you have a person, and, and the board doesn't like that person, then you could just vote them out. It doesn't make any difference whether you approve or don't approve. I mean, that's what it can come down to. I'm not saying it would come down in every case, but it could come down to that. Because it's politics. No offense, that's what it is. And it happens all the time. And so, that's what makes this one, and, and the only thing, too, is if somebody gets removed, they can turn around and the next cycle could re-enter the.
We, we talked about that in life.
We talked about that, yes.
We didn't want to bar the person from re-entering the system, you know, with some ten-year penalty.
Yeah.
We didn't want to do that.
But again, this will be up to the people to see what they think, and, you know, I mean, in their eyes, a lot of times, they feel they put a person in, and they should be the ones to take that person out. I, I know we discussed all that.
Yep.
Yeah, as far as supermajority goes, the, the way the math works out.
It wouldn't work.
Six people voting.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't matter, it's four votes either way.
It doesn't, the math wouldn't play out.
Yeah.
Unless you went to a total vote, which.
Unanimous.
Yeah.
But maybe we could cover this under the ethics policy.
Alright, anyways, that was, that was the goal of this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number zero-one-six dash two-zero-two-four, amendment to section five point four of the City Charter. Support?
No other discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. Kerry.
Okay, on to F, Resolution seventeen dash twenty-two-four, amendment to section thirteen of the Charter. And that section is contracts and purchase and sale of property.
So, this one is akin to the one with the policies. We, we have a lot of variations of, of purchasing procedures and policies in different formats in this community. And what we wanted to do, using the same wording, develop, implement, and maintain a comprehensive purchasing and contracting ordinance at all times, and the Charter would require that it be in place at all times. So, we could take all of our issues on, when do we bid, issues on, when do we bid, when can the office staff make a decision, what's the threshold money amounts, when, when, when is it, when are we waiving competitive bidding, when, when are we allowed to accept the state competitive bidding process in favor of competitive bidding? We want to get all of that harmonized into one comprehensive purchasing and contracting ordinance with a charter provision that says it shall always be in place, so you can revisit it without having to revisit your charter.
And I know one of the things that we looked at is, we wanted this to be an ordinance. That way, it comes up in front of the public twice. The public has two separate times to weigh in on it before it actually gets adopted. So because it has to do with taxpayer money, I, you know, I think we, the committee, believe that it should get that level of scrutiny.
Yeah, I mean, right now, you don't have a whole bunch of, of community members who are around to analyze the charter as it was being proposed. I know you were there, Bill, maybe, right? Were you there for the charter?
With one.
No?
Fifty-three.
Yeah, but, but I think what Jacob is saying is true, is we want to have, we want to have the community's involvement in the ordinance provision, and if, again, Brian looks at the ordinance two years after that and says, you know, I just, this isn't floating right, and then you put it on the agenda for the balance of the commission to look at, and we make a potential change without revisiting the charter.
So for the public's benefit, effectively, this guts most of section 13 in our city charter as it currently reads.
And your ordinance or your provision, policy 34 or whatever your current purchasing.
Places it under, as it reads, it's all under the decision of the city manager when we make these sales and purchase of properties and such. That's currently how 13 reads. This one opens the exact same way, and then states at the end that all purchase and sales under this section shall be subject to a comprehensive and governing city ordinance that shall be developed, implemented, and maintained, subject only to an ordinance amendment by the commission. So the material that's currently in the charter would have to be reworked as an ordinance
Right.
that we can then address as needed as we go forward.
It's salvaged or not salvaged. Some, some might, some might make its way in and some might not.
What's the current limits? Because that's what the ordinance eventually will have to address, is what the current limits are.
The current limits in the charter?
Isn't it twenty-five?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
So anything under two thousand, you can spend without our approval, and anything over that, you always have to bring it to the commission, which means the ordinance would be there so that he could increase that to a larger amount or the board
Inflation, yeah, things like this, yeah.
Back when it was created, two thousand.
Fifty-three.
It's a lot more than.
We haven't increased it in
Yeah.
But that would also leave it open if we had a situation where the city was uncomfortable with management at the time, they could tighten that leash as needed.
Just by amending the ordinance.
Right.
Don't need to bring it to vote for, yeah, exactly.
While I have full confidence in our current city manager, I wanted to make that fear because the public may have questions down the road.
Yeah.
And that's what a good commissioner would do. It allows you that flexibility.
Yeah, because in the past, there's been issues that, you know, that two thousand was, it was a good thing we had the limit.
Our, our city manager is going to change eventually.
Correct.
Is that true?
Oh.
It might happen.
I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number 017-2024, amendment to section 13 of the city charter.
Support.
Okay, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yeah.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to new business, 11A, that's board appointment to the planning commission. So we had, we have one opening with the term expiring June 30th, 2027, and we've had two applicants for that. We have Joe Moran and Catherine Warner, both apply for the position. I can say more than, I have had previous for appointments, I've had a lot of supporting comments, more in particular candidate, and I do want to open some discussion on this, and to do that, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Catherine Warner to the planning commission, term ending June 30th, 2027, hopes of support and opening discussion.
Support.
Okay, no discussion.
She has a lot on her resume here.
Having a resume is comfortable. I, I know Mr. Moran has been with the zoning commission for some time. I'm newer to some of these bodies and discussion, of course.
Planning.
Planning currently, thank you, okay. Without a resume, it's harder for me to make a full, fully informed opinion.
I've served on the planning commission with Joe, wonderful guy. Both of these are great candidates. There's only one spot?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, what a great problem to have that we have more applicants than there are positions.
I, yeah, I heard that, you know, and then I've also heard that you ask for new people to apply, to come in and apply, but if people aren't given opportunity.
Yeah.
But, and I wish there were two spots right now, but that's why I like input and discussion and
But we also have, we, it's also still on another board.
The CED, but that's through planning.
Oh.
So that, I mean, it's
Would that take away the position on CED then, if it changed?
Yeah.
I would like to see new people on the board, so I, I'll go along with Ms. Warner.
I think
I mean, if anybody's heard anything else, forget, please.
You get, you get the same people, same thing over and over again, you get the stagnant, and then people don't even come into the meetings because they figure they're going to run this way. I think change is good.
Okay, any other discussion?
Call the vote.
Okay, vote, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we're 11B, board appointment for the Marine City Area Fire Authority. We have one vacant stand, we have one applicant. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Justin McCartney to the Marine City Area Fire Authority for term ending June 30th, 2025.
Support.
And this was our only applicant, right?
Yeah, and he's currently on there. It's
Right.
the floating member at large. It's the one extra spot every year for the municipality that has the majority of the call runs.
Yes.
So that's why it's, it's an annual one versus a two.
It could change, it could change to one of the townships depending on call volume, so that one has to be done every year. So if call volume changed to East China next year, then they would have the person and ours would, our person would be out.
Call the vote.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, C for board appointment for the Tax Increment Finance Authority, also known as TIPA. Unfortunately, we did not have any applications submitted for two vacant positions, so please, anybody interested in those positions willing to serve, please submit an application for those vacancies. And now for the board appointment for the library board. We actually have two vacancies. We have one person renewing their current position, Louise Butel, and then we had Jill Scheel submit her resignation for her position, so that's the second one, and so we did have the second applicant, and that was Rita Rourke. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Louise Butel and Rita Rourke to the library board for the term ending June 30th of 2027.
Support there.
Any other discussion?
Just make a comment. A lot of these do not have resumes attached, and it's, it is an optional thing to do, but it really, for the public's benefit, if you're going to apply for these, a little bit of a resume can really help us gauge your skills, your talents, your experience, your interests, where you're going to take one of these boards, what you're going to add to it. Would love to see a little bit more of that, just so that we can make really informed decisions.
Okay, roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Abstain.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh, you can
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Can you call Commissioner Rourke again, please?
Commissioner Rourke?
Okay, yes.
It's just you can't, you can't abstain from that, right?
All right, on to 11E.
No, you can't.
The request for approval of water and wastewater operations maintenance agreement with Lys and Vanderbrink. And I have a motion to approve the water and wastewater operations and maintenance agreement, extension in accordance with terms of the existing agreement dated July 1st of 2019 for a period of five years.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion?
Any, any comments, Row?
No, I, I just want to state, as I did in my memo, we've been pleased with the work that's been performed on the first five years of the agreement. We expect that to continue, and in light of our safe drinking water project, we've got the same folks that are operating the plants that are going to be, well, at least one of the two under construction significantly next year, so, again, if there were any issues, I would have shared them with you, but we've, we've been pleased with the work.
Just a clarifying question. As this extends the current contract for a period of five years, is there any changes to amounts paid, anything like this being adjusted?
So we generally will get notification that annually the rates can adjust, which is common occurrence with engineering consulting firms, but it changes no other terms within the agreement at all.
Okay.
Do other firms, like, offer contracts as well, or?
I mean, this is, yeah, this is pretty standard. I mean, I think there only, again, are a handful of engineering, and primarily they're engineering firms, but only a handful of engineering firms across the state that actually do the operations portion inside the water treatment and wastewater treatment plants, so I only know of a handful, and, you know, generally, when it comes up, when you're asking other communities, they're one of the, they're one of the groups that is right there on the first-name basis of having had the experience in doing this. We're very fortunate here that, you know, we also have staff that's working for F&amp;V that have worked in our plant as our employees in the past.
Right.
So they have that knowledge of the facilities and those things, and that was very helpful putting together this, you know, proposed improvement plan. We don't have to retrain.
Yes.
The key.
Nothing else, roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item F, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Policy Renewal.
Katie, do you have anything that you would like to say? We, we do see a small increase, small when I, when I state the sense dollar-wise. Percentage-wise, it's in the realm of ten to fifteen percent, like most health insurance groups. We reviewed this, we looked at other options. Can we go with something other than Blue Cross Blue Shield? Can we go with another program? We are still with the most cost-responsible program. We don't have a competitive edge in the market. We have a small number of employees and a small number of retirees, so we don't have much room to negotiate. Matter of fact, we have no room really to negotiate. Our only room that we have is changing plans, and that, by experience with last year's discussion with the commission, and any place that I've ever been, that is very difficult because it affects employees and retirees, and in this case, there is no one solid product that fits for everyone. We have active employees, we have retirees under age sixty-five and retirees over sixty-five, so the product we have currently is really the best product to be able to maneuver that. We expect that next year, though, we may have some ability to make some changes because we'll have within what I call the census group, which means the active participants, some folks that will be moving then into the post-sixty-five, and that will give us some movement, and we actually have, within the next five years, potential changes on the active side, as we have employees that may be eligible to retire and go, but right now, the plan that we have is the best plan. It's the most cost-responsible plan, an action that the commission approved in previous, the previous meeting. We did separate for some savings portions between vision and dental and moving those to different products, but, again, reviewing this, setting down and shopping the shop, this was the most cost-responsible, is the renewal with no changes. Thanks. Did I cover it, Katie? It's everything you told me to say.
All right, then, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item G, approve the renewal of property and liability insurance, and I believe the city manager had something on that.
Yes, I'd ask that the commission consider tabling this to the next regular meeting. I had placed it on the agenda, hoping that we would have the renewal premium figures. This is not uncommon for those not to be here prior to July 1st, the renewal date is July 1st, because there's a lot of work that happens annually. This year, we added in looking at other carriers. The municipal market is not a very broad market in the state. We really had three primary insurance carriers. One of them was purchased out by one of the others this year. We did reach out and had not heard back in a proposal, but we've had a long history with Nickel and Saft. They're very thorough, and we had completed our review in-house, sent them a couple of items that needed to be modified and changed. It just didn't get to us in enough time today to be able to review to have to you, so we would request that this be tabled. And just a side note, last year, we did the same. We anticipated having it, but we weren't quite there. We didn't approve our renewal until July 20th of last year. So we will still be insured, we're not expiring on June 30th, and you will have information for you at the next regular meeting.
This is the MML.
This, no, this one is, this one is actually our property and liability insurance. We did the work comp recently through the MML.
Sorry, got it.
Yeah.
Nickel and Saft.
I'll make a motion. We tabled the renewal of the property and liability insurance policy until our next, our next scheduled meeting.
Support.
Motion and support? Did you have a, I thought you were going to start making comments.
Oh, no, and we just did it at the fire authority last night with Nickel and Saft. We had the guy, and I'll tell you, we squeezed him for everything we could get out of him, too.
And we, and we do, too.
Yeah, we do. I'm telling you, we're
While he was there, we were pointing out a couple things.
Oh, man, getting everything we could get out of him, so. But they've always been good working with us, so, you know, it's been a good company.
And they do, if I, if I can, Madam Mayor, they do provide us a lot of additional support by way of scholarships and paying for employees and staff to go to training.
Yes.
Most insurance companies don't do that, but you know what? At the end of the day, they're helping reduce the risk, you know, and exposure by doing that for us, so we appreciate that.
And they'll help with procedures. We're going to try to get a grant out of them. There's all sorts of stuff you can get out of them. Yeah, we worked them over last night.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item H, approval of the annual membership renewal for the Michigan Municipal League.
Make a motion. Make a motion, we approve the annual membership for, to the Michigan Municipal League.
Support.
Okay, and discussion? Is there anything you wanted to say?
I just want to note that, again, in the memo to you, this does reflect a 5% increase from the previous year. However, the, the MML does have a policy in place that it is a formula with the CPI or 5%, whichever may be. Inflationary rate was higher, so we are at least being able to be locked in at that 5%. Very nominal in the cost for us and well worth continuing our membership, as well as participation in the legal defense fund. That helps Bob.
All right, no other discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Rorrie.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next is 11I, that's the, approve the part-time as-needed employment agreement with Jeffrey Schmidt.
I'll make a motion, we approve the part-time as-needed employment agreement between the City Marine City and Jeffrey Schmidt.
Support.
Okay, any discussion?
Nope, I'd just say I'm glad that he's gonna stick around.
And this is paying as-needed, it's not like a flat rate, it doesn't anything.
Yeah, correct. We, we have migrated away from any flat rate. This is an as-needed, at-will, part-time position. But if I can add on, you know, Commissioner Hendrick, we really will need some of his expertise in the, not just the transition, but on the Safe Drinking Water Project and the improvements of the wastewater plant. So, this is, this is a good investment.
Yes.
No, he's just been great.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Rorrie.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, the next item is the First Amendment to employment agreement with Chief James Heslop.
I'll make a motion, we approve the amendment to the employment agreement between the City Marine City and James Heslop.
Support.
Okay, and now discussion.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Absolutely.
So, I, I know that you've all noticed, probably, probably the first thing you notice is First Amendment. This is the only amendment that we have ever done, do the agreement for the police chief, which over eight years says a lot, I think, about both the chief and the inner workings and cooperation with the city commissions. The moderate requests are more or less to align on a wage portion that's indicated. Members of the Police Officers Union received a 4%. Our general guideline for other employees was 4%. And I will, I don't know if I should say this with the chief here, we've had a great bargain with only two minor pay adjustments in that eight years. Had we just gone on a CPI or a flat rate, we would have paid a lot more. This is overdue, but I think that putting the language in that also ties that in no such case, moving forward, his increase should be less than that of the police officers in the contract is fair, and that will then become an automatic recurring piece. Also, with the gentleman who served eight years now as chief, and prior to that, 14 years?
I lost track.
Give or take, many years before as an officer. There are some other pieces that are incorporated in here that mirror agreements that we have for new, newer hires, that being the technology stipend. That wasn't something even thought of eight years ago. Looking at a longevity piece, again, after 20 years of service, and I believe you're at 21 years now moving, is that correct?
24.
24? Holy cow. We don't even want to hear about that. You're still staying for a few years. Longevity piece, I think, is very important as a way of, of being able to put in, say, hey, you've achieved this bar, you've crossed over that, and that's an annual piece. And then modification, we've changed some of our life insurance policies here. There was some clunky language that said, you get so much coverage up to this, not to exceed $50,000. He's there. We just put it in the language of saying, this is the policy, is provided to others on a group policy, and then when you pivot to retirement, then you retain this piece. It's all group coverage that we have, so relatively, there is no, actually, there is no change in any cost. And I think the last piece, again, is to look, in the case of administrative staff, the clerk, the treasurer, the manager, the police chief, so often, there is unused time at the end of the year that you couldn't take a vacation, or you couldn't do this. We don't want to set a precedence of having high payouts when somebody retires, but we also, at least I feel, and some of you I've talked to feel the same way, we don't want to penalize somebody who couldn't take a vacation or couldn't use all of their time because the commitment was to the job. So, the last piece of language says, if you have some unused leave time, we will pay you back, basically up to a 50% piece. That's not a very deep liability on our shoulders here, but I also think that's a way of saying, we understand and appreciate that you gave up extra time, even though we want everybody to take and use their family time, but you, you had things here at the city first. So, very common language. Mr. Davis has seen it in many contracts. So, minor, but I think important on the big scale of things, of matching up with other employees on some pieces, and basically putting things in a right perspective moving forward.
Are we allowed to change anything or make recommendations?
Absolutely.
Yeah, what did these cost, Jason?
1,300, somewhere in there.
Can we make that the technology stipend? That Vista computer's gotta go, man.
To, to, to that end, I think it is worth understanding and stating that more and more, if a company's requiring to use an electronic device, any employer, they should be providing it.
Yeah.
If, if you're expecting to do work on it, it should be something that the work is issuing, especially because we're gonna have some say over the data that's on it, the information that's on it, right? It, it's in some place as the employee, the city's information. Providing that, I think, is important.
So, just to clarify, we do provide, and yes, we are getting rid of that antique that might end up at the museum, of upgrading through our regular budget with technology and things because the city owns and retains the ownership, but the additional stipend was put in because there may be some additional items that chief, or has been, out of pocket. Secondary phone lines, so you have dual phone lines and things. We aren't necessarily paying for, for all of the extras. We, we have a phone stipend, but that doesn't cover your cost if you're going in and you have to buy a new iPhone because of the use that you have. So, those are the things that we're trying to offset and, and kind of cushion on.
Okay, with that particular item? Okay. You good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I tried.
Appreciate that.
My only gripe with this is the unused paid time off. I think a work-life balance is really important, and while I'm very happy to support this, please take a vacation, enjoy your time.
I try.
But, thank you for, for when you're doing it for the city, so, I'm happy with this. I appreciate you all bringing this forward.
Shh, Katie.
We didn't hear that.
All right.
Okay, no other discussion?
Thank you, that's all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bryson.
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick.
Yes.
Mr. Clausen.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Rorrie.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then, before we move on to the next one, um, city manager, can we add a, whatever next upcoming meetings or when you get some worked out, we could bring up the clerk and the finance director, too?
Yes.
Just see, they're coming up on a year with some things, too, see if there's something in line that we could also.
Absolutely.
Do with them.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, to item K, the July city commission meeting schedule. So, how we have it now is the motion to formally cancel the July 4th, 2024 city commission meeting and the meeting on July 18th for a city commission meeting, a single meeting for the month of July on the July 11th, 2024. And, city manager, I think you had touched on that before because there was a timeline that we had to meet on.
So, we have something to do on the 12th.
Financial.
Yeah, we may have something to do on the 12th. Of course, the 4th of July, we want to make sure everybody celebrates and is not a commission meeting, but we are going to have the opening of the bids for the water project. They're being received here and opened on the 26th of June. They will then be reviewed and have to be approved by the city commission to forward on to Eagle before the close of business on July 12th, which is a Friday. Those frames, timeframes were set in place by the state, and it puts us kind of in a very difficult situation. We expect it's at least a week or more for F&amp;V to review those, to make sure that everything is in place, but yet, knowing we have to have everything by the 12th, we're kind of compressed. Normally, we could have kept our 18th meeting, that is why we're having to strike in the middle. And I know it may not work for everyone, but I'm not sure if we want to stray from a traditional Thursday, that's also an option, you know, to the commission. If you wanted to do another day, I just threw some thoughts here. As long as we have that proposal and resolution approved prior to the 12th, we'll keep Eagle happy.
Unfortunately for me, the 11th is my mother's 70th birthday, so I can't do that. I, I could do the 8th or the 9th if we wanted to do a Monday or Tuesday.
What, everybody else?
We have a planning commission meeting on the 8th.
And that whole week.
I think that's the only conflict that week.
8 through the 12th, I am.
I can be there on the 11th.
And we're going to work very diligently to keep that agenda light, agenda.
I, looks like I can make any of those days that week.
8 through the 9th.
11th?
No, the 9th.
I, I cannot be here on the 9th.
Bob, can I send a proxy?
Can you be here on the 11th?
Yeah, I can be here on the 11th.
I can be on the 11th, but isn't that a little?
No, we're looking at the 11th or maybe another day. That's what we're starting.
For the 11th, we're down at least two commissioners, right? I, I can make this work. I, I can be here.
Yeah, we can at least get a forum.
Okay.
On the 11th, yeah.
Yeah.
Jacob, are you okay with not being here?
I'm okay.
Could bring your mom to the meeting.
Yeah.
Well, good saying happy birthday.
Is there a process in this situation for any of our commissioners to call in, even if it's a more specific vote or a space on this?
You can't vote over the phone.
No.
During COVID, there was, but.
They can call in and listen in, but they can't cast a vote.
Okay, so I guess we go with 11th?
I appreciate that.
And we'll just try to keep the minimum of just what needs to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping that we'll only have the three items we tabled this evening to come back, once those are tweaked, and then the approval of the resolution from F&amp;V on this. So, I mean, we'll try to keep it in the basic items unless something else should come up, you know, that needs additional action.
Just a second, Ray.
Jacob, we can answer your questions in advance. I mean, if you have questions about anything, we.
No problem.
Okay, so we need a motion to cancel the, I'll just make the motion, I'll make a motion that we cancel the July 4th, 2024 meeting and the July 18th, 2024 regular city commission meeting, and that we have July 11th as the only meeting that month for 2024 for commission.
Support.
All right, motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry. And now to 12 administrative reports, 12A, the city attorney report.
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Anybody have any questions for the city attorney?
Try to beat that.
Okay, city manager's report.
I'm never gonna be able to beat that.
Ah, here we go.
Bear with me, all. First of all, I want to address kind of an accusation that was thrown out earlier at the beginning of the meeting in public comments. There certainly has not been and will not be a flurry of activities of emails and texts and phone calls or smoke signals sent to any of you to conduct any business. It's clearly outlined in the Open Meetings Act, it's not the way that I've ever practiced, nor any of you, and I do take that personally when, when you have that thrown out. The reason why my reports tend to be so lengthy, because I give you and the residents a ton of information, and sometimes probably even more than we all want to hear or deal with. But that's part of doing the people's business at this meeting, is to do that, just as you all do in your commissioner privilege. And from that is how we base our agenda. So, when we talk about these items and the commission wants more information than administration, the attorney, we get that information and bring it back to you, we share more information with the residents. If residents come up and ask questions at the beginning of the meeting, although we don't exchange back and forth, certainly, we try to provide answers to questions, not just for that person, but also for the public as a whole. So, there is nothing nefarious going on. We're, we've done the people's business the way we should, open in the public, and continue to do that. Again, in many cases, I think you know that we generally move from discussion points to action points on the agenda, and that's, and that's part of, part of our job. So, going back to a previous meeting, we had a resident from Bruce Street who had had an issue that he raised with the commission under the public comments about neighbor problems. I have spoken with Chief Heslop, and there has been a number of calls for service in the community. Right now, it becomes a difficult situation of how we can take other action, if it's not a zoning violation, if it's not a criminal violation, we, we kind of have a gray area. So, I've talked with Attorney Davis, we're looking at other community ordinances that we may be able to take and enact or adopt, or even amend one of our ordinances, so we can deal with that gray area of nuisance problems, repetitive calls to the same address. It doesn't just fit the gentleman who spoke with us, we've had other folks that have come up here and said, I have this problem. Okay, well, it doesn't violate a zoning ordinance, it doesn't violate a general ordinance, or it may not be criminal, but it's a problem if you're that person dealing with bad neighbors.
Your sister, Ed.
So, we're working on trying to come up with some language that we can then, again, either amend or adopt as a new ordinance, and, you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll have some other pieces together from, from other communities and some suggestions from, from Bob in the future. Commissioner tours of buildings, grounds, and facilities. So, we've started, we had our first two volunteers and/or victims take their tour, Commissioner Hendrick and Commissioner Rorrie. I will be looking to coordinate with the rest of you. We're doing them two, and two, and two, and then one, or two, and two, and three, again, to make sure we're not violating any Open Meetings Act, but I, I think, and the ladies can maybe discuss this if they choose in their comments, it's good to go out and see the things that we're talking about and to find out exactly when we're, we're asking you to approve large purchases, why. So, expect that scheduling to, to come near you very soon. Downtown sidewalks, sidewalk clearance, we've had a couple of residents who've asked questions about clearance in the downtown between furniture and planters and trees. So, over the course of the past couple of weeks, myself, the code enforcement officer, the building official, we've all been out at different times, looking to make sure that there is a consistent minimum of at least four feet between furniture or planters and the end of the sidewalk. And that's for passage of the general public, let alone somebody who has a disability issue. ADA standards are a minimum of 36 inches. We'd like to be able to achieve well beyond that, so we're looking at at least a four-foot minimum. We may want to talk about putting that into some type of our ordinance as we redo the zoning ordinance of a clear space, but in each of our trips over the past two weeks or so, we only had one issue that came up, and it was a, excuse me, an issue of moving a small A-frame sign that was kind of stuck between some chairs and a city tree. So, it was an easy move out of the way, but we're gonna keep up on that. I do think that it would be to our benefit to tweak the language in the zoning ordinance in the future to ensure that that is clear in the ordinance. But our residents have been, you know, have been bringing that to our attention, and we've talked with businesses, and we're getting their compliance on this. The tot lot, everybody has, if you've been out there, you've seen it. If you haven't, take a trip. We had to wait, again, after the installation, between 10 and 14 days for the footings to actually set, and I know there were a lot of comments on Facebook, why isn't it open? The understanding is, we had to go down in that substructure and make sure that we had three to four feet of good, solid concrete base. We don't want that equipment to move over time, we want it to last, and after that cured, our DPW guys were in there with wheelbarrows, wheeling in that cushioned material, wood chips, primarily, but a cushioned wood chip looks great. We still have some minor work to do there, that'll be putting in a pad for a portage on that'll be out there, and some other little cosmetic pieces, but it looks great. And the minute that the DPW crews got finished with that mulch material and took that fence and that taped down, it's been filled ever since then, so, very positive. The beach pavilion bathrooms, the saga. So, as I had mentioned in the previous meeting, we had an issue with some vandalism inside. It was the tearing off of soap dispensers of the walls, plugging of toilets, a few extra pieces. The guys went in and did a great job cleaning that up. We met, put together some plans to, to make some other modifications out there. out there. Keep in mind, that first activity that happened, we did not have the beach attendants back yet. They hadn't returned back from school. Beach attendants have returned pretty much all of our staffing levels last week. We're back up to snuff. And sure enough, though, we had another incident in one of the beach pavilion bathrooms. Somebody got up on the counter, walked over, jumped on the sink and busted the sink out from underneath the counter. I, I want to preface with strict importance here, our beach attendants are doing their job. They, that person that was working that, they had checked the restroom 15 to 20 minutes prior to a restroom, no issues. There are just some people that find it in their nature that they have to destroy things. And the difficulty, even with some type of surveillance camera system out, is if you have a group of three, four, or five people going at the same time, we still may not be able to determine unless somebody snitches through our great interrogation methods, I guess. We, we may still have a problem. Because again, there, there are large numbers of people that use that. What I want to really emphasize here is, when we had to close the bathrooms again this week for repairs, we still have a second set of bathrooms. We have beach bathrooms located just behind the beach area and beach pavilion bathrooms. So there is always a set of bathrooms open. We are having staff open those beach bathrooms in the morning. They're, they're cleaned, they're set, they're going in periodically. We're trying to get them in checking every 30, 30, 45, 60 minutes. But again, they have their other work that they're, they're also doing out there. Again, comments about why don't you employ more lifeguards? We don't have lifeguards anymore. And if we did have lifeguards, lifeguards would be out watching people in the water, not checking bathrooms. So again, any of this can happen, even with our best efforts. However, we have been meeting with technology companies. We're getting prices on new cameras, not just for that location, other locations in the city. We are looking at new technology that's come up. There is some vandalism sensor equipment, electronic equipment that can go in. I know Commissioner Ross and I had some pretty good discussion about what are some options. These are specifically made for park restrooms, school restrooms that are prone to vandalism, and we are not exempt from this. This is something that happens in every community. Mr. Davis and I were talking about it with a couple of communities he represents. We think, though, the technology improvements between surveillance and these, these sensors, it's twofold, and it'll, it'll help. Because right now, again, if somebody goes in a group of five or six people, and if you don't know who did it, that's a problem. A camera won't give you that answer. But a camera with a sensor may give you that. It's a real-time notification. So you know, between this time and this time, this is when that happened. That's a great tool. Police chief has some other things that he's working on. We're not sitting back ignoring this. And we're asking people again, instead of just running to Facebook and, you know, putting, oh, my God, this is terrible, help us out. If you see something that is out of the ordinary, if you see people hanging out by the restrooms for an extended period of time, they are probably there for some other reason than using the restrooms. Give a call. Let the police department know. We can get somebody out there. We've enhanced the patrols through there. And we're going to continue. But the technology piece, and Phil, I appreciate your, your comments. We're on that. And again, one of the companies you mentioned is, is one of the primary companies. We'll be bringing things back to the city commission for enhancements. And we're also trying to get ahead of the game when we look at future improvements to the marina or those type of things. What do we put in to, to try to deter this? So we're not sitting back. Also, I want to address now in more detail, and bear with me, I know this is lengthy, but the earlier comments made by a former commissioner are way off base when it comes to the safe drinking water project. And I need to say what needs to be said. This has not been done under, under the cover of darkness. As you all know, and, you know, again, albeit Commissioner O'Brien, you weren't on the commission at the time. This was a very public process through the beginning of 2023. And as a resident, you may have seen some of this. We had a presentation that was conducted here by the engineers on this that was very detailed. We had that PowerPoint that was put up for months. Matter of fact, probably even in close to 10 months or more, on the city website, we put the entire drinking water plan on the website. Little bit of history here, the city, we do have antiquated facilities. Our water plant is our oldest operating infrastructure facility. We, as a city, had been placed under administrative consent order by Eagle, drink, safe drinking water, with about 30 items or so that needed to be addressed. Millions and millions of dollars of items that we were required and are required to address. Prior to the safe drinking water program, the combined grant and loan program, we were already enjoined into this, this consent order, saying, you, city and marine city must do these things. We are also directed to have discussions and a study created with our neighboring communities for consolidating water plants. That didn't work because most of the neighboring communities either don't have a direct connection to us or had already done work and are preserving their capacity for their future needs. Therefore, with the administrative consent agreement, we were faced with, how do we fund $29 million worth of fixes and find a way to come up with this? Because we're bound by law to make those fixes under this order. Enter the safe drinking water program from the state, combination of state funding, some federal money, a grant and loan program, competitive grant and loan program that the city authorized moving forward on, at a meeting held on May 18th, 2023, after the presentation, of which our former commissioner was present and voted in favor, as did the other commissioners, to move forward on seeking $13 million of grant money and $13 million of a guaranteed low-interest state-backed revolving fund loan, bringing us the ability to complete the work that's necessary for the administrative consent order. Without the loan and the grant, we would have had to do that on our own. And maybe where some confusion comes in, is I believe it's part of the presentation, our folks from F&amp;V had said, if we don't get the money for this, we're going to have to do this, and it's going to cost $60 to $70 per month for every resident, and we have no choice. However, if we are able to get the grant and the loan, which we scored in the highest percentages of the program and received our entire request, that amount may be reduced to approximately $14 and change. I think it was 1437. At that time, the statement was made, and we still stand by this today, we have been doing everything we can as a city to move forward with the blessing and direction of the commission, to work at reducing that approximate 1437 downward, including, which the commission has approved, two payments from our fund balance, two F&amp;V for the initial engineering, and almost $500,000. That surely is going to move that needle down of investments that we put on the table. And we're still continuing to work with the financial advisors and the bond council for a bond sale at the most competitive rate that we can get to further reduce that dollar amount. Nobody here, we got it loud and clear, wants to put any excessive charges on. We have to pay for something that we're required to do. And we're taking every step we can to bring that cost down, and we'll continue to do so. The bond sale will be forthcoming. We anticipate August, September. I don't have the dates. I'll have more information after a meeting with the bond council next week. And we hope that we get a very competitive market for the bond sales. And we also hope that perhaps as we go through the project, when the bids are received, and we can look at a good contract at a fair price from a contractor performing the work, everything that we are supposed to be doing, we are doing. And again, I just think it's important that you do have skin in the game here. You're putting money in from the fund balance. We're doing everything we can. And any proposed rate increase after the bond issue has been taken care of, still has to come back to this city commission for approval. And if there's any way that we can take anything else based upon your direction from our general fund, we're going to do what we can to reduce that rate. So I think that's important, that, that be addressed. Also, I want to touch on a couple of other items there, too. We had some issues in the cemetery in early May. You're all aware of that. We had rain two, three weeks in a row. I think I gave a complete detail of more people being interred in that cemetery than we have residents. It is virtually impossible, even on a good day, to get it all mowed at one time. There were some questions about looking at somebody affirmed to come in and mow. There was no approval. There was no subcontracting out. We certainly were looking at, how can we do the best work? We got our summer help back. They're out there. They're, they're busting their buns on trying to get this done. The weather again today didn't help us. But the cemetery has been in great shape for now, almost a month. We got through that first part of May. It, it looks great. Keep in mind, they go through and they're mowing on mowers. They're coming back through to get the weeds afterwards. So if you catch somebody after they finish mowing, you might see weeds until they come back out with the weed trimmers. I mean, we don't let this thing set. But it, it is not an issue as it was. We are still looking at other ways to, to do the best that we can. Meetings with prospective businesses. We are regularly meeting with small businesses that are existing in the city to try to help them remain here. New businesses that want to come in, the mom and pops, the corporate. We've reached out to franchisees to come in and, and meet and discuss fast food opportunities. Most of that problem is not just foot traffic, it's vehicle traffic. And they have certain standards. So if it's Taco Bell, if it's Kentucky Fried Chicken, if it's, we're going to meet with anybody. We are actively trying to market the former McDonald's to others. There are a lot of moving pieces with this. And we are certainly reaching out, doing what we can. There is no local tax incentive program, though, for small retail business. So we are trying to take any type of partnerships that we can get from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. That's why we've revived redevelopment ready. It's been active on both the planning commission and the CED board agendas. So nobody is asleep at the wheel. Everybody is moving. We've got people working on putting together marketing plans in the community. The chamber's being very active. So I think it's important that these things just be shared with you. These things aren't falling to the wayside. And all of the information is shared here publicly, and I have an open door policy. Somebody wants to come in and ask questions. We're here to do the people's business, and we're doing it. So that's a lot of stuff. I, I'm sorry I took your time and your time and some of your time, but I think it's important, and I'd be glad to answer any question. Oh, I'm sorry. And if I can, two things. Speaking of cemetery, community service workers are going to be out here this weekend assisting us on, on a cleanup and top filling some areas there. We're hoping the rain, again, stops. They're coming out. They have community service hours they have to perform. We're connecting them with our staff to assist us. Cemetery, and if we have extra time, we'll move them into, to the parks. And then I want to thank Glenn and Kathy Evans, who volunteered to come here and pick weeds at the city hall last week. It's not a, a wonderful, an exciting job, but they spent a couple of days and hours here and certainly appreciate their volunteerism on assisting us. Eric.
Did we have many people come for the cooling?
So we did promote the cooling center here, and we would do it again if we have another heat event. But we had no one come and take advantage of the offer. But we were here if it was needed. And I think that, you know, had we had an incident like last July, where we would have had the excessive heat and power outage, I think we would have seen some folks. But we, we did the right thing, and the library was actually closed yesterday. We were open, ready to go, and will be ready to go if this happens again in the future or in the winter as a warming zone. So.
And thank you for thinking of that ahead of time, because you actually had sent us an update on it last week.
Yeah.
That you were working on it. So it wasn't anything that just suddenly came up to think about Monday. You had been working on it with getting the staffing while the city offices were closed yesterday.
And we had also connected with emergency management, homeland security in the county. So we are on their resource list. And, and we also connected to make sure that other partners, social service partners knew that we were available here. So we'll continue to do that.
And one of the things, too, people have to understand is, we get more information now from Scott than we've ever gotten from anybody. I mean, this man puts together comprehensive information to try to keep us, because we don't all have time, you know, a lot of you guys work. You don't have always time to do all these things. But he sends us sometimes huge lists of all the things going on to keep us up to date on stuff. And even if there's something he misses, we ask him. He gets the information out to us. I, I mean, for all the times I've been on here, this is a, a first that we've gotten that volume of information. And I appreciate it because that keeps us all up to date on stuff. So that when I get somebody come up asking me, I can answer them based on all the information that you're providing.
So, real quick, I do want to thank you for the incredible comprehensive report tonight, despite taking up several other people's time. But, but it, it's good to hear all of these things going on, and it needed to be addressed. You brought up the potential cameras for the various bathroom facilities. This is going to be a decision that has to come before the board, correct? And so this may be a July decision, if we can move on it quickly. But for the public's benefit, as we're, a lot of our citizens are really concerned about this, and they want it done yesterday, which isn't something we can legally do, right? We have to price these, get reports, bring it back and make a decision in front of everyone, because we can't make these decisions through text and email, through the open meetings test.
Yep, correct. And again, we're also, when we're looking at technology, we're trying to get the best product for our needs at the best price.
Yep.
If, you know, I do expect that we'll have some things to you. It'll probably be in a couple of pieces. But everything is coming here for the approval, as it should.
Thank you.
There's two more points that you missed in the refuting claims category. So for anybody that is deciding between water or food, there are programs that can help you. And I would hope that anybody being that close to, you know, needing to make that decision would be able to take advantage of them. And the other one was getting creative with our money. We are investing it. So clearly, that person has not been paying attention. And kudos to you again for thinking to do that. Like you said, it's by a whole salary, you know, roughly, that we're going to make, just for doing almost nothing. So, thanks again.
Yeah, I mean, and I want you guys to know, I, you have a great staff here in the city. I mean, again, from the administrative staff to the general employees, to even the part-time seasonal beach attendants in DPW. Everybody cares about this city. We don't like to hear about things on the street or read it on Facebook, that it's bashing and damning the city. We want to make the city better. None of us are perfect, but we, we all care about this community.
Come with an idea, not a critique. Yeah. Thank you.
We have 38 seconds.
Nothing else? All right, move on to reports from department heads. We have several here tonight. Who would like to go first?
I'll go last.
I want to go last.
Katie, do you have anything?
No.
Either of the matching chiefs?
We've got a ton of weight on, so we're getting through it. Edit this for you. Nope. Start all over again.
Should I stay here or go podium?
podium would be better for everybody.
Hearing it online.
Good news is, I think the last time I reported, staffing levels at the PD are starting to look promising. New hire will start July 1st. I have another officer going to be starting shortly thereafter, planning sometime on the fault to bring my entire department in front of you, so you can see everybody's faces and names and such. So you can meet everybody, the public can see them, and kind of put faces to names and so on and so forth. The body camera update, received those a couple of weeks ago. A little snafu with my interpretation of my initial quote. When they say configuration on site, I assumed that it was installation of the docking stations inside the patrol cars. Well, that was my mistake. So you reach out to people that you know who's, who's intelligent on building cars and such. And special thanks to the fire department, a few of their members graciously helped us take the patrol cars, put them in their garage, and help us install the docking stations. And for the most part, I think it went off without any hitches. Then Monday, or Tuesday, G-Tech actually came out and configured them all. I can't push them into service shop until I get a mounting options. I'm waiting for those to come in, and then those should be up and running within a week or two. So that's that update. The last piece of information I have is, a couple months ago, I had submitted paperwork to the state for a burn JAG grant to attend the International Associations of Police Chiefs Conference in Boston. I received a phone call last week, said that I was awarded, it was for smaller agencies, less than 25 officers. So Bob Stevenson from the MACP, which is the Michigan Associations of Chiefs of Police, called me and said that I was one of the grant recipients for that, which is a $2,700 reimbursement grant. So in October 18th through the 22nd, I'm flying out to Boston and going to attend that conference. So I'm, I am looking forward to that. So that is the last piece of good news I have. So any questions, I will take any if anybody has any. Beautiful.
Thank you. I don't know how they matched tonight.
Hasn't even dressed alike tonight.
Some good news for the city and DPW. Our board last night approved the swapping of a pickup truck to the DPW, which should take effect in roughly about three weeks from now. And I've talked to the city manager, and we're going to still work with each other and for some little favors here on the side of the parking lot and stuff, for just donating this truck to the DPW for lawn and whatever else. And it's 25 years old, but it's a Ford. It should run forever, right? That's all I have.
Wait, wait. Talk about, go ahead and talk about the new truck.
The new truck will be here tomorrow, and we're going to start wiring it up like we did the police patrol car. I'll ask for his help now. And we should have that on the road within about a month. I'm still going to be waiting for the cap for the rear end of it and stuff like that, and some new equipment to go on it. But that should be here tomorrow. And I'll bring it to the media when it's done.
The new train.
And it's another Ford.
Yeah.
If I didn't know when everybody was going to go, I wouldn't have gone last.
Just provide you a couple of updates. The foam
Just provide you a couple of updates. The phone project, the target live date is mid-July. We have all the paperwork in through CTS to port over all the numbers from Comcast. They're working on that. I'm looking to meet with the project coordinator, probably not this week since tomorrow's Friday, but early next week, meet with them and get it all going and get it installed hopefully by mid-July. Website update, spoke with MunoBit on Monday or Tuesday, and they're working on the build-out right now and the migration of all of our data from the current website. Looking for a target live date of mid-August sometime. They say it takes five to six weeks. We had that kickoff call on Tuesday, so five to six weeks from then. We're also working on migrating all of the old agendas and minutes into Granicus, so they're all in one spot. Commissioner Hendrick, I know you had spoke on that when we switched to Granicus, that there are multiple spots. Cool point of going to this new website is so everything's available there, easy to find. Myself, Deputy Clerk Brown are working on it, as well as Audrey, our part-time cashier, working on diligently getting those uploaded. I think she got through all of 2023, 2022, 2021, 2020, and 2019 today. So, if you go on that iframe in, on the minutes and agendas on the website, past events under City Commission, you will be able to see all of those agenda packets, all of those minutes there. We've gone back to 2018 for all the boards. That's the plan. If you'd like us to go back further, we can, but just know that anything previous to that is available in city offices for anybody that wants to see those minutes or agendas. I just think bogging it down on there might be a little much. It's back to 2018 on there currently, so figured we would just stick with that. But if there's a desire to go further, please let us know, and we'll continue to work on that as well. Lastly, on the website, we are going to run a contest, so to speak, I think is probably the proper way to call it. With the new website, there is an option for a cover photo or a cover video, and we would like all of the talented photographers and videographers in the city to submit their photos, submit their drone videos, videos you take of the city, and we'll pick the best one. We'll iron out those details, you know, later on how we pick it, but bring it to the commission maybe, or internally, we can pick that, but that'll be featured on the front page of our website. And we think it's kind of cool to get the citizens involved in that, and we could even run something where we switch it periodically, maybe seasonal or monthly, something like that. So, everybody gets a chance to have their art displayed on our website.
Very nice.
Quickly, I know this has been a wish, but August, we will have the agendas live on the monitors here during the commission meetings. It's an easy process. It's just, it's been busy the last three commission meetings, been very lengthy, with the July one being very short. We could probably do it, but for sure July and going forward, we'll have those on there. People can follow along in the audience here. You can follow along with the agenda and look at the items that are on there. Lastly, some election updates. On Monday, the 24th, we will have public accuracy testing at 5:00 PM in the conference room of city offices due to there being a 300 Broadway committee meeting in this chambers here. You're more than welcome to attend as the public to watch that testing. Just enter through the front doors, and a member of the staff will escort you back to the conference room to watch that testing if you so choose. Also, there is a new ballot drop box installed outside. I think I mentioned this maybe in my annual report, but just want to reiterate that. DPW did a great job installing that quickly when it came in. It's been sitting there waiting to be used for a couple of months now. It is unlocked. It is ready to go. Anybody has absent voter applications to drop in there, you can drop those in there, and absent voter ballots will be going out next week. That is also where you can drop those after hours, and we also have a drop box in the lobby where you put those in as well. That is it.
Anything?
Just on past minutes, I know that we are supposed to keep them by hard copy, but do we see any potential, you know, wisdom in having electronic copy as backup somewhere?
You're only required to keep them per their retention schedule. It's not, if one way or the other. It doesn't need to be hard copy. I'm looking to transition to electronic here going forward.
Yeah.
I no longer print the entire packets for the folder and for the record. The only thing that's in the records are all the voting sheets or any additional items that need to go in there.
Okay.
We're starting to save those electronically. It's easier to save. We'll look at more storage down the road if we need it at that point, but I think electronic is the way to go. It's the way of the future.
Sure.
Getting cloud storage or something like that, I think is feasible as well.
I mean, they exist somewhere because, you know, we had like a survey done, and they found some resolution that the commission did in 1964. You know, I mean, they're all outside. Yeah, that, all that's to be retained, right?
There are some very antique minute books.
There's still the written, handwritten, minute books are still here.
Okay.
Which can actually go to the state archives, and they will house them for us.
Oh, that's actually nice.
Which is.
They're interesting readings sometimes.
Yeah. You know, the Guy Center stuff, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of things.
And, yeah, all that was, anyway, it might be nice to have that.
To digitize all of those, going back is
For sure.
Very costly, but.
Well, yes.
Here, going forward, I think electronic is the way that we'll go.
Madam Mayor, can I get a quick go-back? I forgot something in that whole list. I hate to, but it is very important because we do have a closed session on the agenda tonight. I did have a question from a resident that was asking me at the beginning of the week about insurance coverage for the lawsuit that we're involved in. I believe that we had discussed this here with the commission before, but I want to reiterate that no insurance coverage is extended for this litigation. It is based on a breach of contract premise that is explicitly not covered by our, it is one of the exclusions, which is common in all municipalities, breach of contract is not covered by your insurance. Therefore, any settlement that may be achieved on this is coming from the city general fund. It is not something that's going to be covered by the insurance or reimbursed by the insurance. And I know it was mentioned before, but I had a resident ask me the question at the beginning of the week, and I said I would clarify that and share that information to the rest of the public. Commissioner, I'm sure you were aware of it, but it is not covered by insurance at all.
Thank you.
Thanks for the go-back.
All right. If nothing else, then we'll go to commissioner privilege and liaison reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
Planning commission, didn't have a meeting this week this month yet, so the only comment I have is that as commissioners, everybody, we have to, we have to have thick skins. And when you have somebody come up and you cannot, we're not supposed to parter back and forth with them. They have their say. That's their time to say it, whether it's a lie or it's improper procedures. It's, and when he gets up and targets the, our mayor, our city manager, our commission, and doesn't have the proper facts. The case that he's talking about against me has been through the state police. Everything has been clarified, and it was more of a clerical thing over a water tap and a water, a water tap and a connection. There's two things. When you tap to the main line, that's a water tap. And when you, when they turn you on at the gate valve, that's another. That's a different one, it's a smaller. But somebody didn't agree, and they decided to bring up it in a different matter. It's all been taken care of through the attorney general and through the state police, and it's all been cleared. I have done nothing wrong, but I, this guy needs, or anybody that comes up there and wants to accuse us, they're going to have to wash themselves against lawsuits for slander. And otherwise, I guess I had something for the DPW or the, understand that we had the auction?
Oh, yes. That would have been my other go-back.
You both go-back.
Over $38,000 of income from the surplus equipment auction, which was well beyond Katie and I's projection. We're good with numbers. She's better than I am, but we're good with numbers. That was much better than we thought.
Nice.
Very helpful.
Did you get rid of everything?
Yeah, everything, everything was sold. Even a vehicle that really couldn't be driven off-site was sold and, I believe, loaded up on a trailer and sent on its way.
Okay. Great.
And so, I do appreciate it. I've been talking about getting rid of the excess stuff for years, and going through an auction or going through something like, instead of all of a sudden, I'd say our DPW or somebody else in there says we're going to sell the stuff off, nobody knows, and I've seen a lot of stuff go to employees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Two quick things. First, with all the storms we've been having, when you're going, when you're mowing your lawn, if you have a storm drain in front of your house, just take a peek. If there's a bunch of stuff in it, just take a minute and clear it out. It really does help keep the water off the roads and makes it safer for everyone. And other than that, just want to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Commissioner O'Brien?
There is something about needing a thick skin, and speaking when we're supposed to, it can be difficult sometimes, but it's necessary. Pretty much every city commission privilege session I get, I start off by thanking the city employees and our staff. Scott, Jason, Katie, everyone else from our fire departments through the police, through DPW. We have a really good staff and group of employees here. Fellow commissioners, I often don't congratulate you or thank you for the good work. It's not personal. I'm just really grateful for the staff that we have. The work that you all do keeps us going, and it's taken us in new heights and new directions. That's wonderful, and this is something we have to recognize. Eventually, we're going to want new employees, right? A lot of you are doing a great job, but you're going to move on to greener pastures at some point or retire. And when that happens, we need to fill that position. We cannot do that by attacking our city employees week after week, whether it's online or in-person up here. That's wrong, especially when someone says they're for the working man and then attacks the working man. This is inappropriate. It's hypocritical, and it's insulting to the hard work that we do. This is not something anyone in the city should be doing or anyone in the city should stand for. That said, we aren't making decisions online or in text or emails. We wait and do that here, which delays some of the procedures that we want done. Sometimes it takes more time than we'd like, but that's the Open Meetings Act, and we comply for this, so it's done legally. So, we can't be sued as a city because we know that that's taxpayer money that should be going to these projects that we want to do, whether it's fixing sidewalks or roads, right? There's questions right now about this water project. City manager, you laid this out about the historical processes to how we're getting here, why there may be an up to $15 increase down the road. We're looking at that coming in far under. I want to highlight a piece that I did not hear you speak to on this that I think is also important. This project's redoing our roads.
Yes.
Not all of our roads, but vast majority of them. And we have a Paser study and other projects in the works to address the rest of the roads. Many of them are in really bad conditions. I think it's one of the number-one priorities we have as a community that we could all agree on. This project is getting that addressed and taking care of. We don't want to be one of these cities with a water crisis on our hands. Getting an administrative consent order is hard enough and close enough to a crisis. For those of you who are upset and having questions about this, please come to these meetings. Please come to our city offices and ask. You're not getting the best information on Facebook. Unfortunately, we do not have a formal social media presence where we are giving this information out there. It is best to come here and get it and have your questions raised and get your answers appropriately. It's not that we don't want you discussing the town online. That is great. Please continue to do that. But when you're having these pressing questions or pressing ideas, as they've been levied to us tonight, please come here and do this. It's the best time for it. If I say more, I'll get angry, so I'll stop. Happy Fourth.
Thank you. A local resident brought up to me something that I wanted to mention tonight. I've been congratulating a lot of high school seniors on graduating, and I neglected to mention Cardinal Uni. And I apologize for that. They are no less important and a major factor and part of this town, and I wanted to congratulate all of the Cardinal Uni grads as well. And, you know, again, reach out if there's anything that, you know, you want me to highlight or say, and I appreciate this person for doing that. This morning, I was about town and witnessed a small medical emergency and got to see Mr. Joe Slangster, Chief Joe Slangster, first to the scene. And I just really appreciate you and all the work you do and all of our first responders and everybody, all the city staff. Again, it just, it literally brought a tear to my eye to see Joe was there first, consummate professional, absolutely bringing comfort and calm to the situation, and it was really, really nice. Hot weather, Commissioner Bryson mentioned the rain. Hot weather, stay cool. Again, as mentioned, we have this area available, or even just, you know, sit in the front lobby and rap with the city officials, you know? You can learn something and might have a good time, too. But this area would be available as a cooling center. And I would like to extend major thanks to Joe Moran. I know he left, but what a great guy. I had served on the planning commission with him. Bill, you'd served with him as well for many years. And, you know, just a great guy, very much cares about this city, and I wanted to thank him in particular for his many, many years of service on the planning commission and hope that his passion for the city continues perhaps in other boards and elsewhere. Have a great Fourth. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Brien?
I'd just like to say it was great to see all the city facilities, what they've done with them, good and bad, cleaning them up, making them better. Jeff and Scott did a really good job of explaining everything, and we went everywhere, and when you get a chance, it's really great to do. And also, I just want to say happy and safe Fourth of July.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendrick?
I just want to say, not too much, but I'm going to, our staff is one of the best that I've ever seen here in a long time. And I'm going to say that this is the board, but one of the best boards that we've had in a long time. And I've been on here a long time, and I just want to say that everybody now is working well together. We don't all have to agree, but it's so much better to work this way than it has in the past. And that just reflects on everybody. And without our staff, I mean, they're the heart of the city. We need them. We need good staff, and we have, like I said, some of the best we've ever had, and that's what's really, really nice right now. We've got the most competent city manager I've ever seen here in all the years I've been here. So, they deserve the praise from all of us and from the community. And, yeah, I know things don't get done as fast as people want, but it takes time to get things done. Everything that you said was spot-on, and so you have to bear with the process. So, I just want to thank everybody again. That's it.
Yes, I have a few quick things. You know, ditto for what Commissioner Hendrick and Commissioner O'Brien said. Our board, our city staff, department heads, everybody, they're great to work with, and it's just amazing what we can get done and what we've been accomplishing and doing. And we don't always all agree, but we can agree to disagree, and it's handled appropriately. And I just hope everybody can see that. Other things, I'd like to thank the garden club for stepping up to replace the hanging baskets around town. They've stepped in to replace those. And I don't know if anybody had seen, there's a library links that you may have gotten in the mail. There's a lot of families looking for things to do with the kids or other things they can do. If you take a chance to go through this, throughout the libraries in the county, they have pages and pages of things that you can go to the libraries and do when you're looking for stuff in the summer and stay cool while you're doing all those things. So, please take a look at that for things to do. Another thing I wanted to thank Phil for bringing to my attention. Phil recently was at some training in Oakland County, and he reminded me about the NIMS for elected officials, and I had talked to city manager about that. There's no classes right now that they have available. When they do, it's called the G402 NIMS, and it talks about how we can help if there's any kind of incident in the city, public safety type incident through the National Emergency Management System. We will return to open session for any action that would be taken. And can I get a motion to enter into closed session?
I'll make a motion that we move into closed session pursuant to 15.268E to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Holly Tatman versus City Marine City.
Support.
Brooke Popple.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vannebod.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Will she carry?